Okay, it looks like it's that time to start. We'd like to welcome everyone here. Got a full house. Looks like we got a department here. Was that a department head meeting here? It's awesome. Glad to have you here. And we welcome all those who are watching on TV. We've asked Wes Alderson to come up and give us our inspirational message and prayer, if he'd like to come up.
With the elections and things going on right now, I've been kind of been involved there emotionally and spiritually. Couldn't really decide exactly what I wanted to cover on this, but I, since it's a thought and a prayer, I went with George Washington and the prayer of Valley Forge and several and different heroes. I don't really know how long I want to take on this. I have a couple of heroes. Let's go local first. And my uncle Ron told me a story of my father. My uncle was a pilot. When he retired from the military, he was the oldest fighter pilot in the world, oldest active fighter pilot in the world. And he told me a story of my father, how when he was, my father served in, he served on general staff during the Battle of Iwo Jima. He was in Guadalcanal, Okinawa, major Pacific war. And there was a time when he was out cooking his breakfast out in the, I picture him out in the sand, and a strafing Japanese plane came over, and he had to go for the dugout, hit the ground, and he looked up. My uncle Ron said, he said, "Why am I here in this God-forsaken place?" And he looked up and he saw the flag, and he knew why he was there. A lot of us have different heroes. All of our fathers have served, many of us have served, many of the people here have served. But we live in a great country. We need to be grateful for that. George Washington, when he went to Valley Forge in 1777, the army was led by George Washington, was at Valley Forge, and in some of the worst conditions an army had ever had. And of our, of that time, George Washington wrote a letter to John Bannister dated in April 17th, April 21st, 1778, explaining the situation. "Now history, now extent, no history can extend the furnace, can furnish the instance of an army's suffering, such uncommon hardships as ours has done, bearing them with the same patience and fortitude to see men without clothes, cover their nakedness, without blankets to lie on, without shoes for want for their marches, that they might be traced by the blood from their feet. Submitting without the murmur is a proof of patience, obedience, which in my opinion can scarce be paralleled." Because of the severe conditions the men were on, 12 soldiers died per day. George Washington rode into the woods away from his man to pray and to ask God for help. Many have seen the painting where he knelt by his horse. Some have wandered, some have wondered if this were really true. The incident was witnessed by a Quaker by the name of Isaac Potts. Himself was, was walking through the woods and came upon General George Washington as he prayed. George Washington was unaware of Potts, who stood behind a tree watching. With tones of gratitude and labored adequate expression, he adored, he adored the exuberant goodness which from the depth of obscurity had exalted him, the head of a great nation, the nation fighting for fearful odds, for all the world to hold dear. Afterwards, Potts returned to his home, threw himself on a chair by the side of his wife. She, seeing his troubled nature, asked him, "What was, what was the matter?" He replied, "If I appear agitated, 'Tis no more than what I, than what I am. I have seen this day, what I shall never forget. Till now I have thought that a Christian and a soldier were characters compatible, but if George Washington be not a man of God, I am mistaken, and still more shall be disappointed if God has not through him performed some, some great thing to this country." You rather than all are representing us and have the opportunity to make decisions. I'm sure there's quite a conundrum in a lot of your decisions. It's my hope that you will take time to do what God would have you do and try to understand that. Quite often, I'm sure, that there are financial decisions that would make more sense, but I hope that you'll prayerfully seek our Father in Heaven's guidance, so that things in time, to thine own self be true. So then in time, you will be aware that the decisions you've made are what the decisions that God would have, and you'll truly have a clear conscience. But that'll say a quick prayer. Our dear, kind Father in Heaven, we express our gratitude unto thee for the privileges and opportunities that we have to live in this great land. We're grateful for the leaders of our nation. We pray for them. Pray that they will seek thee, seek thy counsel, that they will be guided to make the right decisions and choices. We pray for the leaders of our state, of our county, and especially at this time, for the leaders of our city. We ask thee, Father, to please bless them. Please bless them with thy Spirit. Please bless them with thy counsel. Please help them to have and to feel and to know the things which thou would have them do. We pray, Father, for thy forgiveness of our weaknesses. We pray that thou will please overlook them. Help us to recognize our weaknesses and help us to sincerely strive to overcome them. We express our love unto thee, Father. Pray that we may always live worthy of thy direction. We say these things humbly in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thanks, Wes. I've asked Councilman Argyle to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask that Kim Oldson come up and do a presentation for the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. And welcome.
Great, thank you. My name's Kim Oldson. I am the Executive Director of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. We're a statewide association. We have over a thousand members, and we represent most of the park and recreation professionals throughout the state of Utah. We're very passionate about recreation. We believe it's one of the most important things in any city or government. It's, gives us reason to live, and you work and you do all these other things, so you can then be able to recreate and play and have fun, and, and all those experiences that make, make life truly enjoyable. Anyway, we have a great group of professionals that we represent. We're very passionate about recreation. We have workshops, trainings, the opportunity to network from people from all over the state that share ideas and problems and solutions. One of the main things we do is we hold an annual convention. It's, this past year, it was in St. George, last month in March. And one of the things as a professional association that we like to be able to do is recognize excellence within our profession. And we have a committee of past presidents that were, have been past presidents of our association, that actually help select the award winners. These are all men and women that have a lot of experience in recreation. They've all been directors themselves, and so they're very good judges of, you know, what is a really good program and what is, I guess, kind of so-so. So anyway, we have some awards that we actually, at our conference, presented to your department and staff and members that, that work in your, in your park and recreation. And right now, I would like to introduce our immediate past president, Dan Harrison, and our president-elect, Derek Reichert. And if, they'll come up and they will make the actual presentations. Go ahead, Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We're grateful we could be here to award these to you. I see you have a three-minute limit. Dale told us about thirty minutes, so we'll be brief, but at conference, I always try to glean good ideas that I can, and maybe some of the council members who remember. I came by after lunch one day and took a picture of the group of Spanish Fork, and they probably thought I was crazy, why is this guy taking a picture of us? But I look at Spanish Fork as a place that has vision and gets things done. And I saw council members, Seth was there, Dale, his whole team was there, and they were discussing Spanish Fork and, and things that needed to have, have happened. And that was one of the things I took away from conference, was to see, that's a way to get things done. Get together, go to places like that. And so I commend you for that, and, and I think these, these awards also reflect that, kind of that vision and commitment that Spanish Fork has. So, so there are two, and I believe there's a video for, for the first one, but that'll explain it better, better than me. But Dale, the first one that we want to present is it's an innovation of the year. So as we share ideas, we try to highlight things that a community's tried. They don't always work, but one that's been successful and impacted the community. And, and one thing that I read about this one is, is that this program created a lifetime of activities, a mantra for recreation, took a leap forward with treasures of the trail. And so we'd like to recognize Spanish Fork for the treasures of the trail program as an innovation of the year. So Dale, if we could have you, if we could give this to you.
Let me, let me make, let me make a comment or two here first. This is a, this, we got a lot of celebrities here. We're sitting amongst celebrities, as you'll, as you'll soon see. But this project required a lot of vision and a lot of people, and basically it culminated with a ribbon cutting of our new, the completion of the River Trail. If you haven't been out on that lately, it is very, very busy. Our citizens are thrilled, and they're using it heavily. But the vision behind this was to connect our facilities, because our master plan has these facilities connected to the trail. And, and there's a lot that went into this through people taking selfies at various facilities and awards that were given out. And I wanna, I wanna first of all, just quickly recognize a couple of, a few people that really had some vision in putting this all together, and then I'll show you some of their work. But if I could have Pete Hanson and Travis Born come up, please. Channel seventeen is just an awesome resource to have in Spanish Fork, can I tell you? If you're not a, if you're not sold on that, then you should be. But these guys are awesome, and I just have a little token of our appreciation for, just a little something to say thanks to these guys. I also have something to, for Nick. He's not here, but you can give that to him.
You'll keep it.
Make sure he gets that way. Two Take will take care of it. But we, we really and truly appreciate these guys and their vision and their creativity and their expertise in their field. And also, you know, all, obviously, all of my staff, Elaine, the events coordinator, Bart, who's the parks manager, and Karen, and all of her staff. It took all of our staff to be able to pull this off. But all of these guys here, as you'll soon see, you'll do autographs after, right? They'll be available after, outside for autographs.
Maybe twelve glosses autograph.
But we, we do appreciate, we had a lot of fun with this, and as, as the people on the association that looked at these videos were just in awe. And, you know, they're fun, but they also have a, a really good, good message as part of this whole thing. So, Chris, let's go ahead and run that, if you would, please. Thanks, gentlemen. Now, I know there are people out there in TV land that are going, "What in the world does that have to do with anything?" Besides the fact that it was very entertaining, you know, we had, we had all of these facilities that we were highlighting, and of course, that's a splash pad at North Park. And, and then they had opportunities to take selfies and post those on the internet and receive awards. And all of this was a culmination of all these, I don't know, what did we do, four or five videos? A lot. Six videos, a bunch, which led up to this, this grand opening. But a lot of fun, as you can see, there were a lot of people throughout the community that helped with this as well, and we extend our appreciation to them. If you get a chance, these are all on YouTube, right Pete? So you can go on YouTube and view all six of them and have a chuckle. They're, they're a lot of fun, but thank you very much. We appreciate it. Again, all the hard work paid off, again, with the association, so thank you. Appreciate that, gentlemen.
I'll be viewing YouTube tonight to watch the other five episodes. So that is creative and amazing. So, the, the next award we want to share, so, the other thing that Parks and Recreation, we, we thrive and survive on is, is volunteers, whether it be, you know, coaches, team moms, all sorts of different volunteers within divisions, people that help in the parks. And Spanish Fork, you, you have a volunteer that's been with you for many, many years, and, and Dale will talk more about him and what he's done for the community. But at URPA, we are proud to recognize Clyde Nielsen for his work as an outstanding volunteer with Spanish Fork Parks and Recreation.
I want to say just a couple things, and then I'll turn the time over to Clyde to say a couple of things. But Norma, could you come up here too, please? It's okay. We have a bad hair day every day, don't we? There's not enough time in our three minutes to say what these folks mean to our community. And I'm sure the Council has some good questions for you. But I can remember when I started in this profession, twenty-eight years ago in Provo, Clyde was working at that time with the Utah Boys Baseball Association as a volunteer. But there are so many things and so much time that has been given to this community. One quick story, every time Clyde brought his baseball equipment back, he never returned any of the baseballs. We would send a dozen baseballs out, right? Clyde would not return them, but every year, he showed up with two dozen new baseballs for our program. And that probably goes unnoticed to most people, but not to us. These two, and I can't even tell you how many people they've paid their fees for. You know, young kids that, that don't have an opportunity to play, and, and these, that's what type of people you're dealing with here. Not only are they willing to give their, of their time, but their resources. And, and that's the reason I wanted Norma to come up as well, is, you know, your leisure time's valuable to you, and, and what you choose to do with that. And Clyde has chose to mentor young, young people, and, and that's what he's done with our program. And, and he's meant a lot to a lot of people. Clyde's probably won more sportsmanship awards than anybody else in the city, because he's not about winning. He's about building champions for life, and that's what he does. And, and as you watch him perform and his antics on the field, they're what, they're the role model that we want for all of our coaches to be. Because these programs are meant to help build and nurture young people and teach them life skills, and there's nobody better than this guy right here.
I wish that were a hundred percent true. A couple of my former players are here. I guess we succeeded with them, but I appreciate it. I mentioned when we made the application, I, I do appreciate it very much, the recognition. Probably some others who could, who are equally worthy of this recognition, and, and I could mention them, but the reason I suppose I'm here is, as a, as a boy in Provo, growing up, single mom, Jack Craig Headfield was built when I was nine years old. If you know where that is, it's gone now. That's where the Provo Recreation Center is. But played a lot of baseball, had some wonderful coaches, and then of course, we came to Spanish Fork and started our family. We raised four boys and two girls here, and we wanted to get involved and help, and I'm really trying to pay back all of the great coaching that I received as a boy. I don't think I've paid it back yet, and I've coached for many years. After coaching our own sons, I enjoyed it so much, I want to keep coaching. And I, I want to applaud what a great recreation department we have in Spanish Fork. I'm really proud of it, as I've seen new people move in over the years. Before long, they find out. Say, "Wow, we have a good recreation department." Yeah, I'm glad you found, found out, as we really do. So I'm very honored. It does take a good companion, my wife. I remember the day when we had a, I was down coaching, I suppose, and we had ball games, and she had probably a child, three, and a, and a baby eight or ten months old, came to the ballpark, finally got to a game, and sure enough, she got hit by a foul ball from the other field. She said, "I guess I better not go to many ball games." But she has been a support in, in spite of the challenges that we've had. And I do appreciate the Utah Recreation Parks Association and also the Spanish Fork Recreation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Hey, thank you, and we appreciate all the work that you guys do, and we're grateful for that. Thanks for this honor. We got a great rec program, and they do a good job.
One of the best.
Yes, they are. They can coerce a lot of us to do things we wouldn't normally do. It's great. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to public comments. If there anyone here that would like to address the Mayor and the Council, you're welcome to come up and state your name and talk to us. Seen none? I'll go to Council comments, and we'll start with Councilman Beck. Councilwoman Beck.
Okay.
Councilmember Beck.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank Allison Isaac. She was our 2015 Miss Spanish Fork, and the pageant was a couple weeks ago, and she just did a fantastic job, I think, representing our city last year. She was involved with a lot of things online with SF-17, and very involved with the Chamber of Commerce, which I was a part of, and I was able to get to know Allison. So I just want to publicly thank her and welcome Jordan Reed, who will be our Miss Spanish Fork 2016. And then I want to publicly thank Clark tonight. He has been our chamber director for just over a year now, about a year and three months. And I wrote everything down that I've been thinking of, of Clark lately, his expertise, knowledge of commerce, uniting businesses in the community with his visits, some businesses receiving visits for the first time ever from a member of our Chamber of Commerce. He set up a meeting with SAPA and the Executive Committee, Todd Dickerson, Lance, Wilton, and I were able to go with Clark and meet with SAPA and learn about their organization, and we found out a couple days ago that they ended up becoming a platinum member of our chamber, and that was solely because of Clark's efforts there. He's out pounding the pavement, five to six days a week, he's working for our chamber. He recently had Neaters join, which they've been a member of our community for three years, but now they've joined our chamber and worked closely with Walmart, who was a big, geez, a big player with our Easter egg hunt on so many different levels. We wanted to thank them, and, and I think it's because of Clark's relationship. So Clark, I just want to publicly thank you for all your time and effort on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. So now you can come up and take your minute. Yeah.
Oh, I like that, that minute.
Your three minutes.
Actually, Councilwoman Beck doesn't realize that Greeks cry very easily, so, but I want to thank her. I love this community. I love everything about all of these communities. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And my goal is to do whatever I can do to make this stay a community. I joke and tell people that once, when people start referring to this as a city, that's when I'll quit. And we are a community, all of us, so thank you. And I did appreciate Councilman Gordon wearing a bow tie at the New Spanish Fork Pageant. I'm not quite sure he tied it by himself, but I am proud of that.
It was a clip-on.
Yeah. Just, as many of you know, our directory went out, which this year, because of my background with journalism and with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, I tried very, very hard to turn this into something that can be used for tourism, that can be used for economic development. And typically, this has been a forty-page work, and this year it was eighty pages, which that's, you know, I do things long and...
Have we noticed?
Drawn-out, Mayor, and so. And I'm always really glad to provide the comedy, you know, so. Not quite sure what a broken chair will do. You had your cookies tonight, maybe I have to bring cake next time, but I will tell you, our lanyards for Plan Plug are here. And we went ahead as per our contract, and we order our lanyards from someone here locally. Dickerson Auto is one of the sponsors. Colt Sampson with State Farm is of course, one of the sponsors because of the, the $25,000 grant that was very, never would have happened without Colt. It never would have happened. And then the chamber itself is a sponsor, and we'll be moving to get these into the schools. And on June 18th, I hope that families will bring their children and come to the sports park for the kickoff party. There won't be a year-end party, it will be a kickoff party, and part of the trail, and so we'll have that. One thing I can tell you is, is that we did miss you at the, at the Easter egg hunt. The Council traditionally hands out the bicycles. The Mayor had a great idea, but someone had beat me to the punch, and we had an amazing opportunity to have the American Legion be there. And there were about 12 individuals that represented everything from World War II to the Iraq conflict in Afghanistan. And the kids were absolutely thrilled, as were the veterans, and one from World War II who would not get off the tricycle, and I don't know what his name is, but they had fun. And in the snow, it was fun, because the kids looked like they were playing duck, duck, goose, goose, and it, it was great. So next year, hopefully you guys will be back, and if not, we'll take the Mayor's suggestion and do that. But love our American Legion. One thing that we are doing to work with them is, Spanish Fork has not been represented at Boyd State since 2012. When I grew up, Boyd State was the place that you went. And we are working with Justin Lucas, thanks to Seth Perrins. Justin lives in that neighborhood, and Spanish Fork will be represented this year. We are working with Robert Beadley and the American Legion, and we will be helping fund, not very much, to get a young man from Spanish Fork to the... to get a young man from Spanish Fork to the, to Boys State and to hopefully start that tradition again. The golf tournament is April 27th. We do expect that the council, there will be a foursome. You guys can decide. The city staff, there will be a threesome, and someone will be assigned to keep you in order. But we set out with the Rotary Club to do 106 foursomes. And we actually have had to turn people away. We also have had to turn people away for the sponsorship of the 18 holes. And this is for the scholarships, and I think we are coming of age, coming into the age. So we will see you all on April 27th, and I'll, we'll get you the information. I've actually asked a young man that I watched grow up to join me here tonight because I just want him to tell the community and you, and I think most of you know what he is trying to do with Booth Brothers and the Old Angeles Theater. And my mother told me that she still remembers what movie was playing when the Angeles Theater burned, and it was the Easter Parade. That's how old and iconic theater is. For me, I know that there is bubble gum on the floor, that is mine. I think I probably had my first date there because I was too young for the Old Arch Theater to be able to date, but the Angeles Theater. And I'm going to let Kurt Gordon tell you very quickly what he is doing with GoFundMe because in five days, this young man, there is $5,000, about $5,000. But I'll let Kurt take it. I know he's related here, so there's a little bit of nepotism, but that's okay.
Well, actually, the last time I was in this room, I think I was ordered to do a book report, and someone else may remember that as well. Thank you so much for your time. I've worked for Booth Brothers Music since 1998, and with Steve and Mike Booth, and you couldn't ask for better mentors in the music community, just a great family. But one of the things that's kept me hooked for so long has actually been the theater. Booth Brothers Performing Arts Theater, as it's known now, which originally was the Angeles Theater, that was built in 1914. Like Clark said, it burned down in 1948, and then was rebuilt right around 1950. But it's been a mainstay in the community, and it's really quite a remarkable theater and kind of a forgotten landmark. What I'd like to do is raise funds to be able to restore the theater with focus on originality and a vintage feel, an early 1900s feel, something similar to what you would see on Center Street in Provo or the Levitt Building right here in Spanish Fork, or this beautiful Thurber Building here that we're in. Because I think that really is kind of the most sort of visible paradigm of, of architecture from the early 1900s in this area. The reason I'm interested is because we've, we've been able to do many things with the support of our, our community here, thank you all, with music. And one of them is, we do blues jams, we do free events where people can come and play with a band. We also do programs for students who want to learn how to play music. We have a program called Real Rock Band where any student can join. We put them in bands and coach them on how to actually play, and it really is just a lot of fun. But also, the building itself has a real spirit to it. It's got a big, open space that could be used for all kinds of things. It could be anything from family parties to Maple Mountain Martial Arts, Black Belt Testing. But primarily, a fine performing arts center, infrastructure with, with a great sound system. And so we've started a campaign on GoFundMe last Thursday. And actually, many of you have donated, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. I think this is the kind of thing that can, can help us not only continue on with music, but to be able to restore this building to its, to its former glory. So that's what I wanted to let you know about today. And the campaign is on gofundme.com/BoothTheater. So if you, if you're interested, please check that out. And of course, we're always down here at Booth Brothers Music on Old Main Street in historic downtown Spanish Fork. So thank you so much for your time, really appreciate being heard today.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
She saw it, he's not the only musical, Gordon, on the video, right? He saw that.
Yeah. Yeah, we saw that.
That's all of you.
Councilman Gordon, let's see if you can beat that one.
Oh, that's tough to beat.
Time-wise.
Time-wise. I also wanted to congratulate Ms., Ms., no, Ms. Spanish Fork, Jordan Reed, and thank Allison Isaac, and wish her good luck as she goes on to the Miss Utah Pageant to represent our, our city. We have a registration coming up for the mini-miss, the little miss, the junior, and the teen. So through the recreation department, they have a program where little, younger girls can compete in a pageant as well. Done this for several years, and so that registration is open until, I believe, the 18th of this month. So you can go online and sign your, sign your daughters up for that. Sounds like I have one that will be competing, so it'll be fun. Gets me out of being the emcee for that one. Went to the Swana Conference that I mentioned in training. We were taught about all the changing regulations and land gas and state of recycling, emerging technologies in the garbage world. And so spent some time with, with them down there, learning, Mayor. And things are going well at the solid waste district. At our meeting, we continued to look at our partnership with the New Era, which is Northern Utah Environmental. We're currently studying the asset and the value of our landfill, the Bayview landfill, to see what exactly the value of that, and if this partnership were to, were to work out. And as I've mentioned, we've tabled our privatization study until we know what that, what that's going to be. Many of, many people have inquired and know about our green waste situation, that it has closed. The district made the decision to close it. I went online today and printed out my vouchers, try to bring them here. And so you can go on the city website, print out, get yourself three vouchers. It'll look something like this. They'll scan each one of them as you take your, your green waste to, to the facility just on the north end of Spanish Fork and south end of Springville. It's actually in Springville. So, so just wanted to remind people of that, so they have that opportunity to go to the city website and print out those vouchers, so that they can take their green waste in. And that was the alternative that we came up with to the district closing down that, that green waste facility. There's a household hazardous waste collection program or meeting that's this Saturday at 9:00 a.m. at the Provo Town Center Mall parking lot, where you can take things like medications. In the old days, we used to just flush them down the toilet, and we don't do that anymore, do we, Chris? It's bad for our water. Any, any old gasoline, fuels, motor oil, batteries, antifreeze, things that are tough to, to get rid of, they'll take for free. They've partnered with, with several, several groups from, from around the county to put this on. So, so that's available as well. The State Aeronautics Division, changing, changing tunes to the airport, named the Spanish Fork Springville Woodhouse Field Airport of the Year. So Utah Airport Operators Association gave us that award to both Springville and Spanish Fork. And so we were honored to receive that. There was a great article about it. A lot of things have happened. And one thing that I noted was that our tenancy has gone from 100 to 180 over the last six years. So we've almost doubled the amount of those people that have their planes down at, down at our airport. And I, so I think things are going well there. I think it's, since we've lengthened our runway by 6,500 feet, things like that that have helped to, to make our airport a much, much more improved place. Other than that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Councilman Scovis.
Mayor, just a couple of small things. The Veterans Committee, they're working on an open house in April, focusing on PTSD. Flyers and Information will be coming out for that, for the community, all is invited. And then the, the Library Board was scheduled to meet the night of the caucuses on the 22nd. But keeping in line with, making sure that all meetings were, were canceled or at a minimum so that people could get out and participate, that was, that was postponed, and we'll be meeting, we'll be meeting later this month. I'll have a report after that.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you. Councilmen, I'll echo a little bit what Stacy touched on.
I'll echo that Clark is the man. He is doing great with the chamber and with the businesses in town. Clark, every time I come across one of them, they are very complimentary of the chamber, the direction it's headed, and the representation that you put a face on for us, so, so I appreciate that. Kurt, that's great, what you're doing downtown. It is, is awesome to see happen on the historic part of Main Street. I credit Kurt with maybe helping me close the deal with, with a girlfriend becoming my wife. He, he taught me a few guitar lessons back when I was a younger man, and I fooled Amber, you know, enough times to think I could play the guitar, that she dug that a little bit, so thanks for that, a long time ago, Kurt. The Parks and Rec folks mentioned the conference that happened a few weeks ago. I was honored to, to be at that with a couple of other council members and our Parks and Rec staff. It, again, I've said it before, so it is a broken record, but they, those people do look up to what we have here in, in Spanish Fork as a, as a standard to try and meet. Along with that conference was a water conference that some of us attended, and a power conference. So just to let the citizens know that, you know, these meetings happen every, every couple of weeks as city council, but the city council and the mayor and the staff are, are engaged a whole lot more than that at conferences and meetings, learning how to do better and learning how to do better at really important stuff, like, like your water, like your power, and, and like your parks and recreation. Clyde Nielsen, being here and being honored is, is a treat for me to see. And my best friend Sam playing for him is a good person to be here, too. I think it's still unfair, Clyde, that you let him back in Pony League catch, and he knew I couldn't hit a curveball. He'd known that since I was seven years old, but he'd called Spencer Blackham to throw a curveball nine times in a row, and I couldn't touch it. And I thought that was a little unfair, playing for the Padres. And Sam playing for the Braves there in Pony League, but...
He was a blind owner of sportsmanship.
He was, wasn't he? That's what Kevin said, I know. I believe that. I won't tell you what he said from behind a home plate while I was up to bat a few times. I don't know if you taught him that, where he learned that. And that, that maybe leads me to another, another point, Mayor, that I want to quickly make. And some of this gets a little emotional for me because it is my childhood, but last week, with our Parks and Rec Department, I volunteered to, just like many, so many do in our community, to, to coach Mustang League. And got sent up there with 21 other coaches and parents and 150 kids up at, up at the junior high to, to have a little draft or whatever, and watch the kids throw the ball around, and, and then come down to the, the Parks and Rec building until 10:30 at night and draft the kids and, and go over the rules and how, you know, you can get kicked out if you do this and if you do that and whatnot. It was something Clyde's been through many a times, my first instance with it. And, and it was, it was neat to see that, that's, we do have such a good department that way, and they're, they're growing. Three expansion teams in that league means that, man, there's, there's, there's a whole lot of kids still interested in getting out, playing ball, and, and being involved. And a whole lot of parents that are willing to take their time and do that, too. Real quickly, I just want to touch on, on that aspect of it. In our community, we're, we do care about, about each other, about our youth. Last week, we had a little bit of a tough situation. I was up in the American Fork, the Lesser Fork, doing some work for, for my employer and teaching kids about finances and a financial literacy class, and, and walked out with, with kind of my heart full and, and a lot of hope in the generation that's, that's coming after us because these kids were smart, and they, they, they were anticipating the future, the future that's, that's just going to happen shortly in their lives. Walked out of that to a text that was, was tough to take with, with the youth in our, in our community that, that suffered from depression. I guess I've, I've tried to think about what to say about this, and maybe in a public setting, the, the only thing I can say is all of our youth, whether it's through Parks and Rec, whether it's through the Youth City Council, whether it's through whatever organization that you have, church, family, otherwise, know that if, if, if that stuff doesn't let you know that you're worth everything in this world, know that your, your city is, thinks the world of you. Life is really, really good, and it's really, really good for a lot of us in our community. We talk about it constantly, seems like every time we talk here, we, we say how great it is. And for some kids, it's just tough. And just know that, that that tough, those tough times, to borrow a phrase from a movie, just know that you're never, you're never out of the fight. Keep fighting. Feel free to reach out to, to your city in any way you can. I think I can speak for all of us here to, to say that you'd have a helping hand and, and here to listen and a, and a, and a hand to help you reach out, so... Don't ever give up, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Argyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to also echo the opportunity that I've had to be at the convention, also the UMPA. And just would echo to the citizens of the community that, as I have learned a whole bunch in the last couple of months, to let you know that you are in good hands, that we're, we're just not standing around hoping for something to happening, happen. But things are being watched over, things are being taken care of, future is being looked at. I was so impressed with the UMPA of the things that they talked about and the things that are, that are coming down the pipe that everybody seemed to know about and was preparing for. Instead of just waiting for the sky to fall, we're being prepared. And, and that was very eye-opening, and I was grateful to be a part of that. I'd just like to also remind everybody that first of the month, it just seems like it goes by so quick. The animal shelter that we're partners with from Provo, Springville, Mapleton, Spanish Fork, Salem, Payson, and Springville, they had a, they have clinics across the, each one of these communities. They had one in Spanish Fork and had good success and an opportunity to get there and have your dog get their shots, get a chip in it if you'd like, and license your dog in the community. It helps if you lose it, and it gives it a quick way to get it back to you because that's their goal, is to return their pets to their owners. I also want to be, just shout out a little bit for the Senior Citizen Center. We have a new director down there. Verna Joel Hollingshead, did I say that right? Hollingshead. And you know what, I went and visited her the other day, and she's, she's came, she's come to a place, and the first thing she said to me is, she says, "I'm the luckiest dog in the whole world." And she's fit right in down there, and they're doing some neat things. And if you're a senior citizen, take an opportunity to come down. They'll, they'll welcome... Uh, they'll, they'll welcome you in arms. I'll promise you that she'll give you a hug personally. Um, and get to know her and get to know the seniors of this city and what a great, great asset they are for this community. And, and hopefully some new things to come out of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, appreciate that. Um, just let me touch on a couple of things. I, uh, ditto to everything everyone said here. We've had some, some, uh, great things happen here in the city. I just want to thank all those citizens that participated in the caucus meetings this past, uh, little while. Uh, it was great to go. I've been going for quite a while and, uh, it was great to see so many more this last caucus meeting and people getting involved and if you want to be part of the, the city, the country, that's the grassroots right there, so, uh, get involved and vote. I had the opportunity to go to a, uh, a meeting with the Governor last week and, uh, the one thing that stuck out to me with him, uh, of course, he's running again, but he said, uh, "Since I was old enough to vote, eighteen," he says, "I've never missed the opportunity to vote." And he said, "I don't care whether you vote, which party you vote for, but take that opportunity to vote and, uh, have a voice out there." And, uh, all of us can make a difference out there if we all get out and vote and, uh, it doesn't matter what party you belong to." So, that was impressive to me. I had an opportunity to go back to Washington DC last month, uh, for our, uh, Public Power Convention and, uh, like it's been mentioned, uh, we're in good hands. Uh, our local UMPA Power, uh, Convention was in Saint George last week. And just to show you how, uh, important our power agency is, uh, Sue Kelly, who is the CEO of the American Public Power Agency, came and spoke to us and, uh, she, this isn't the first time she's come. And so, uh, she has a great respect for what we do here, uh, with the cities that we are involved in and so, um, we're in good hands and, uh, we are looking for the future and trying to, to, uh, develop what we can to, uh, keep our power rates low and, and, uh, as you look around, you'll see all these guys here with Spanish Fork Electric on their shirts and I just want to tell them thank you for all that you do out there because, uh, uh, you keep the lights on. You know, most of us just come, we flip the light switch on and, and we get upset if the power goes out for a few minutes and, but you don't realize all the work that these guys do. So, thank you and thank you all our employees. Okay, well, speaking of that, one oh one, electric outage progress.
Okay, I, I'd just like to say I've had a chance a couple of times to play, uh, doubles tennis with Clyde and, uh, he doesn't mind winning. He's a really good guy, though, and I know his family a bit and, and what a great family, but I'd like to invite the, the whole electric department up here if I could, could I get everyone to come stand up here? We just would like to recognize them, something that they all accomplished together. And, uh, just really, I'm, I'm proud of these guys. I just think the world of them and, and, uh, I, I just want to say about five years ago, they started tracking, uh, in detail, all of the outages and, and started trying to do something about it and I'll let Kelly kind of explain what they accomplished.
So, if you can kind of see our graph up here, we've tracked things since two thousand and ten. Every time this group goes out on call, they come back and write out on a chart what they went out on, the area that was out and information, so we can come back and kind of look at, uh, how many outages we had. The graph we're looking at up here shows how many outages we had involving five or more customers. So, we classified an outage that was worth noting as five or more customers that affected a pretty good group of people. So, over the years, we averaged about, uh, you can see here, we've averaged around close to twenty outages over the last four years. So, we kind of set it as a goal to beat that twenty average and reduce the number of outages. And some of the things we've done to do this is increased our annual tree trimming, uh, we do an annual line inspection, we annually, uh, check taps and fuses through the line inspection, we do an infrared inspection of the system where they go around with a camera, find spots on the system that are showing heat that help us go out and find a problem before it becomes an outage. Uh, we do weekly inspections on substations, test our substations every year to make sure we're not having any problems with them. And then they're on a five-year rotation for big tests where we have to shut them down, do major tests on all the equipment to make sure it's still operating the way it should. And then one of the things we've had to do is, uh, put raptor protection in some of our substations. We've had a problems with birds getting in substations, blowing lightning arresters and causing outages for us. So, we've started a program where we've done two out of our seven substations, the ones we were having problems in, we did first. We're budgeting money every year to put that protection in all of our subs. Uh, we did Fourth North between Third West and Sixth West where we had a few birds that had got into the lines there and, uh, didn't make it. And then out at Leland Mill, we've had a few birds out in that area that we've had to do some raptor protection. So, with this group, we have been able, in doing these things, to cut our average from nineteen to this year, down to eleven. That's cutting it in half just by these guys doing a lot of these things here and a more strenuous inspection of our system through the winter months when things are a little bit slower on the construction side. So, they've done a great job to reduce the number of outages, which hopefully keeps our residents and customers a lot happier.
Do you know, I, I was reading an article on, on Monday morning and it was talking about an outage up north of us that had affected over twenty thousand people and how long it had gone on and had a link where you could click and find out information on that outage and I clicked on it and it said, "We only track outages that affect five hundred or more customers." And I thought, what a great city to live in where we, we are worried about five or more customers, but, uh, we, we, Kelly and I have talked about this a lot and, and this really represents the hard work of his whole department, of all the employees. So, we'd like to give each one of them a little plaque for their desks for, for this great accomplishment and, and read their names if that's all right.
They have a desk?
Yes.
Geez.
So, Vern Jackson. Rol Chrisison. Kai Chang. Richard Stoneman. Gordon Kirk. Sam Andres. Rip Walgren. Brady Shepard. Gary Deelmer. Mike Hendrickson. Travis Reed. Travis wasn't able to be here. Jake Jarvis. Brock Jewett. Brock? Jake Tyer, he's not able to be here either. And Tom Cooper, he's in school. Roger Jeffries. And myself, I guess. So, I'd like to say, pretty good accomplishment for this group. Uh, I know we had the big outage last year where we had the pole fire. Uh, normally, we get a lot of negative comments when we have a big outage in town. People seen what caused that outage and the amount of work these gentlemen had to do to restore that power and it was nice to see from that outage, the positive comments come back from the community saying, "Thank you for what you did to power that on as soon as possible." So, these guys work really hard to make sure that, uh, they keep your lights on all the time, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
That, there's a lot of empty seats.
I like the scouts.
You gonna let them all leave now, Chris?
I'd leave if I was.
What are you just gonna say? Good. We're gonna do, move into consent items.
Should we warn Clyde and Norma that they can head out or they could stay here till eleven? Oh, please stay, but this is gonna be a long one.
You know, we've already had the top of the seventh inning. You can go now. You're ahead.
Okay. Besides the minutes, uh, the first item on consent items is the final change order for Phase Three of the Airport Runway Shift. This is to true up the quantities and the quantities were a little overestimated and actually, once we put in our real quantities, the, the project cost went down about a hundred thousand dollars. Any questions on that? Next item is the Center Street, uh, Cut Bridge Project, modification number three. This modification transfers about ninety thousand dollars from another, uh, MAG, Mountland Association of Governments project to this project, so it can be used here. Uh, the next one is, uh, an actual change order for the Cut Bridge project, which, uh, is because of railroad delays. This change order is for forty-three thousand dollars, three thousand of which would, would be the equivalent city match, so. Our match is six point seven seven percent on, on, on these Mountland Association of Government projects, so. And, uh, that's all I have.
Good, you did well. Thanks, guys.
Uh, I have a couple of items on consent. Uh, the first one is the, uh, Miss Spanish Fork Parade Float. Float Parade. Might've got that backwards. Anyway, the, uh, the contract, and you have that in your packets that I sent with the staff report. Uh, this is to lock in pricing for four years, so what they'll do is they'll do a complete design rebuild, then they'll just do, uh, upkeep the next year and then we'll do another re- design rebuild and upkeep the following year, so. Um, that's to lock us in, so the, the contract there with Creative Concepts, uh, for you, I don't know if you have any questions there. It's pretty standard on what we've done, uh, in the past with them. The second item is the Municipal Recreation Grant that we apply for through Utah County every year. Uh, we talked about this at the council training, uh, in January. Uh, this twenty thousand plus dollars will, uh, if awarded this grant, uh, will go to, towards the completion of the Dog Park uh, on Sixth East and Fourth South. And so, uh, uh, what I'm asking for here is for the council to authorize the mayor to sign the application as it requires the council's, uh, approval prior to applying for the money. Any questions on that? Thank you.
So, the next item is to approve a quitclaim deed for a boundary agreement. Uh, we've got the River Point subdivision coming in. When we approved that, we anticipated an exchange of properties. Uh, we were going to dedicate some to them, they were going to dedicate some to us, uh, out along the river. It was anticipated that would be done on a flat dedication. However, the title company discovered that there was a gap between the properties and so the proper way to resolve that is through a, a boundary line agreement, quitclaim deeds. And so, this is just to approve those quitclaim deeds to resolve that and accomplish what the goal was. It's just a different method than we anticipated. Last thing is, uh, settlement agreement with Mr. Payne. You're all familiar with that. This, uh, concludes that matter.
Great. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a, got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, uh, ordinance, uh, public hearing for ordinance, uh, ZO three dash sixteen, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Newport Village Zone Change.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Did I give it all?
There's a, you, you did. Let me just add as well, I'm gonna present a preliminary plot for your consideration.
Well, let's do whatever you want to do.
Um, the subject property is about twelve and a half acres in size. It's located immediately adjacent to a, a facility that's being constructed by the LDS Church between what would be Center Street here, if it continued on beyond this point, and First South down here. Again, twelve acres. Uh, the property to the south is currently zoned R one nine. Some property over here, uh, is zoned and developed, it's zoned R one six. The applicant has requested that the property for this project, Newport Village, be zoned R one nine, so that's the zone change proposal. And with that, they have proposed a master plan development in that zone. That basically means, in essence, that all of the lots would average out to be nine thousand square feet in size in the project. Um, a total of forty-one lots, which are well within the, the density parameters that's permitted, um, in that particular zone, the R one nine zone, and the applicant has requested that the setbacks for the project, um, match what's permitted in the R one six zone, so a slight deviation from our standard setback with the master plan development. So, that being said, I'm gonna touch briefly on, uh, some discussions that we have with the Planning Commission about the zone change. Part of the proposal, I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like. We did spend quite a bit of time with the Planning Commission reviewing, uh, basically a question as to whether or not it made sense to, to zone the property for residential development now or if, uh, the city would be, I guess, better advised to wait on a zone change with the idea that potentially the property could be developed commercially in the future. So, those discussions really came about, uh, based on what may be hard to make sense of here with this image. Um, but, uh, again, the subject property's right here and this line work is intended, um, to provide the idea that someday we think there, there will be an interchange in the vicinity of either First South or Center Street and I fifteen. An I fifteen interchange and quite possibly that interchange will, uh, orient to a commuter rail stop that would be on the west side of I fifteen, so the Planning Commission, uh, recognized that fact that there has been some planning work done for an interchange to be located here. In fact, uh, as staff reviewed this proposal, we made sure that there was adequate land set aside on the northern boundary of the project to accommodate the extension of Center Street so that it could tie into an interchange if one were built here in the future. Um, and I really appreciate the Planning Commission and the, the pause that they, they had us make to be very deliberate as we thought about what really is best for this property in two thousand and sixteen and even looking out into the future a little bit. I, I genuinely appreciate that perspective. Um, again, this is line work that we've been given. Um, it's, it's somewhat abstract in nature but, uh, suggests that, uh, you could construct an interchange in that area there, it would tie into Center Street and therefore you have this twelve and a half acre site right here with, you know, relatively good access to that interchange. Really good visibility to the interchange. And it was shortly after you authorized us to contract with CBC Advisors to get... And it was shortly after you authorized us to contract with CBC Advisors to get questions like this answered by way of, you know, does it make sense to, to plan for commercial development at this location? And frankly, a, after the Planning Commission meeting, when I went to Steve Bowler and asked him for his thoughts on this, and he said, "Well, you know, I'll, I'll take a look at the images that I had sent him." And in fact, he came down and looked at the site in person, and in short, after conferring with some of his colleagues in his office, he said, "Boy, if there's an interchange there someday, this is a perfect site for a grocery-anchored commercial development." Really surprised me, honestly. It genuinely surprised me that, that they felt that way. The dimensions of the property are, are close to ideal for at least, what, in two thousand and sixteen? You'd wanna have for a, you know, maybe an eighty thousand square foot grocery store with some pad sites and, you know, maybe some strip space as well next to it, that type of a thing. Um, so, Steve, thank you. I really appreciate your, your input. And, you know, he, he, uh, he's no stranger to how things often unfold in the world of real estate development and, and timing and different things like that. So, we had some very candid discussions about, um, some of the other realities that come into play relative to property developing and, and property owners' desires to sell property and different things like that. But, you know, even in spite of that, he was very, very, um, clear in his recommendation, and I felt like he did a great job of, of, uh, providing the city with the best advice that he could. Now, that being said, we, we took that, that recommendation that we got from him and went back and did a little bit of soul searching, and I'm really gonna cut to the chase and just say that, largely because we don't know when, and I hate to say this, but also to some extent, if an interchange is going to be built here, we as staff did not feel comfortable taking Steve's advice and recommending that the property be reserved now for something that might happen and would only happen if an interchange was built here. And frankly, probably would only happen if an interchange was built here that followed a configuration that's similar to this, toward this property really would be at the, at the front door of that interchange. So, just, um, one quick thought about planning for this interchange. Right now, that project is in Phase Two of MAG's Long Range Transportation Plan. So, that, that phase runs from two thousand and twenty-five to two thousand and thirty-five. We have another project in Phase Two, an interchange project, which would potentially be an interchange at twenty-seven hundred north, near the Ford dealership, where right now it's just a bridge over I fifteen. And unless you, you correct me here, it's my understanding that that project today is the city's highest priority. So, that being said, um, just being, I'm afraid, practical about it, I don't honestly think that we'll have two interchanges built in Spanish Fork in Phase Two. Um, I think we're probably looking at something, you know, maybe post-two thousand and thirty-five for an interchange to be built here. And there are all kinds of things that could change that. Sort of, you know, one of those things. Uh, the same study that identified this alignment identified failure on our Main Street unless an interchange is built here prior to two thousand and forty. So, we're looking out into the future ways when we start talking about two thousand and forty, just like two thousand and thirty-five. Um, I just mentioned that, um, to support the idea that we really believe there will be a need for this. So, I'm not, I'm not discounting that. Um, but, again, by way of us recommending that the zoning be changed now in two thousand and sixteen to allow for this residential development, which in effect, I mean, it, it eliminates the potential for this property to be developed commercially in the future. That's being done with the idea that, you know, crystal ball's only so clear. Um, but given what we do know, uh, we don't think it's appropriate to pin our hopes to something that may happen in twenty years and to hold, you know, perhaps, I'm not gonna use that phrase, allegedly, and to, and to force a property owner to, to make alternate plans for their property in the meantime, um, and to otherwise, you know, really force zoning on market conditions today. Typically, that, in my experience, doesn't work real well. But, um, I'm gonna make one last point relative to, just kind of the notion of, of reserving sites for commercial development. Um, and again, we're recommending that the zoning be changed here. Frankly, if the zoning's changed, then approving the preliminary plat, in my opinion, is, is a pretty simple act. Um, but, uh, I'll just skip through a lot of the stuff we talked about in the Planning Commission meeting. It, it, to talk about how this proposal with Newport Village is different from some other things that we have in the city. So, for example, this property, this image, I'm afraid, is about as abstract as the other one. This is four hundred north here. This is twenty-five fifty east. Maple Mountain High School's right here. This is just a screenshot of our zoning. When the annexation that included legacy farms happened here several years ago, land here was designated commercial, zoned commercial by the city. There's no, there's no current, as I understand it, market for commercial development at that location. But because there's an existing state highway here, and because there's an existing collector class road here that we know will proceed at some point in time through to the north, we know this will be a lighted intersection, and all of those things, basically, they either exist today or they're largely within our control, which is different from a Center Street interchange. That's largely out of our control. Because of that, if somebody, for example, were to come here and propose that we change the zoning to allow this property to be developed residentially today, I would really wince at that. And, you know, we would hope that we could convince the city council to just let that, let that evolve a little bit. Um, I'd say the same thing about a couple of other sites in town. In fact, we'll talk a little bit more about this one tomorrow. This property here was zoned, in this case, it's blue, to designate the Commercial Zoning District in twenty-five fifty east here, US Highway Six. Fifteen years ago, that property was zoned for commercial uses. I'm certain that if that property had been zoned residentially, it, it would've developed, you know, given the housing boom that happened during that period of time, this would not be available for commercial development today. Um, it's the same thing about this property down on South Main. Sixteen acres right here, owned by the Gardner family. The city's owned it commercially, I think, closer to twenty years ago. Personally, I've met with many developers that wanted to buy that property from the Gardeners to develop it residentially. And our script with them has been, "Sorry, you know, in the future, we believe there's gonna be a need for a relatively good-sized parcel, like maybe sixteen acres on the south side of Main Street, to provide services that that end of the community will want and need. And we think, you know, those services will be viable to provide. You'll be able to have a retail development there that will function. We'll have enough rooftops in the area, traffic, uh, circulation area will be good enough because of volunteer drive, which right now creates a three-way intersection here, but that will extend to the east." Um, again, things that largely are within our control. And here, you know, the, the framework's such that Main Street exists, volunteer drive exists, the signal exists. That's all present, and that's why, and you can tell what I'm trying to illustrate here, these scenarios are different. So, in these cases, we think it's important to hang on to that, that prospect of supporting commercial development. But, uh, in the case of the Newport Village property, project, um, there are things that, you know, simply, they're out of the city's control. Talking about plans that UDOT would make, uh, regional transportation issues, things like that, and simply a timeframe where we know we're talking in decades. Um, so with that, we recommend that the zoning be changed to R one nine for that property, and that the preliminary plat be approved, uh, which is also what the Planning Commission recommended.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Since this is a public hearing, I entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody here that would like to come up and talk about this Newport Village Zone Change?
Hi, Will.
Well, come on up.
Thank you.
Time's a-wastin'.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Ron Hatfield. I was born and raised here in Spanish Fork. I don't live here currently, but I am associated with this property with the Thomases. And I wanted to, I do have a lot of commercial development, and I wanted to comment about the developability of that particular site. And if you were, were to bring the slide up again so we can see it briefly, I'd just like to highlight on the site itself. Is that possible, Dave? Back to the intersection. Is the pointer?
Uh, the other one.
Yeah. Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Now, that one works.
Uh, it works, okay. Uh, remember, this particular site right here is developed by the church right now currently. And for a large box development and for a project of this nature to be successful, it needs some mass. And right here, we see the police station. Little piece of property right there, a little bit of property right there. It's true that this would support one shopping center-ish type of development, and that's really it. That's it. So, to be a center of mass, particularly for this particular site, I would respectfully disagree that it is prime for a reg, or for a center of development. That would more likely fit on this side of the freeway, were that piece to be in place. So, um, just a thought in terms of someone who has done a lot of developing commercial development. That is cute, this particular site, it would be a nice for a box store, but it's not going to be like it's what by the Costco area. It's not gonna develop into a shopping, uh, uh, center point or a nexus, my, my input on that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Prince with Ivory Homes. I'm the applicant. I don't know if I'm supposed to go after it right now. Uh, Dave did an excellent job of summarizing the project, so I won't reiterate what he's gone over. Uh, the only thing I think I can add is that during this process, um, we have received a lot of inquiries from residents that live to the south and to the north, which, uh, are, are very excited about the project, that are looking to stay in the neighborhood, wanting to downsize. And so, uh, we're very excited about the project and, and appreciate Dave and Chris and their staff in, in working through a design that I think complements, um, the neighborhood, is consistent with the general plan, and will be a, a really neat project. Any questions I can answer?
Downsized, aren't those similar, you say downsized, but aren't those similar lots to the south of you?
They are. Yeah, exactly. They're, and what I mean by that is folks that, uh, as far as lifestyle change, they're looking to downsize, maybe they're, uh, got one kid left in, 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 in the home and, and are looking to build a new home, main floor living, that kind of thing. And so, uh, no question, we'll be able to build some larger two stories, but, uh, folks that are, are looking to maybe even upgrade as far as their lifestyle, but stay in the neighborhood.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Dave, I see that you've got like a park and ride and some things, some other little signs on there. Could you maybe just quickly let me know what maybe Trax's idea is of coming to that area? I've heard that, uh, the idea of a park and ride or a track station would be ideal. Is that true, or have you, do you, can you speak to that?
The study that was done in two thousand and twelve was commissioned by MAG. UTA and UDOT were both partners in that study, and it really had two purposes. One was to identify whether or not feasibly you could build, and it, and it, it didn't just cover Spanish Fork City, but also looked at some things in Payson and some things to the north. But for our purposes, it evaluated whether you could build an interchange at twenty-seven hundred north and meet, for example, federal highway standards for, uh, uh, just lane weaving kinds of issues, uh, minimum spacing issues and things like that. So, again, just a feasibility perspective on whether you could build an interchange there. The same was said of this site here. Could you physically build an interchange at this location and meet the different criteria that come into play? That was one side of it. And the other side involving UTA had to do with whether you could build a commuter rail stop in this vicinity. UTA had already identified sites in both Payson and Springville for stops. And with that, there's a certain spacing criteria that comes into play. And they have some other criteria relative to, for example, the straight length of track that's needed, both leading into a stop and exiting from a stop. So, they put those different things into play and evaluated the area. And of course, another thing that they want with a commuter rail stop is relatively close proximity to an interchange. And essentially found that if there were an interchange here, you could have a commuter rail stop adjacent to it, and it would meet the different criteria that, that are required. They evaluated the amount of area that they thought you likely would need for both the commuter rail platform, you know, that type of the facility or that part of the facility, and the parking field that they would expect, excuse me, expect a facility like this in this area would warrant. And of course, we don't have a whole lot on the west side of I fifteen right now that would hem that type of development plan in. So, um, they found that both of those two components feasible. Um, really, it's a matter now of need and being able to obtain funding. This particular part of the project, as I understand it, will be relatively expensive. It's got a couple of rail lines that need to be spanned, roadways, um, things that just, they add cost to a project. So, kind of going back to the, the logic I talked about earlier, I think in likelihood, we would see something to the north before we'd see something down here just because of expense, but that's, that's speculation on my part. But that is our plan. So, I'm taking a really long route to answer your question. The plan is park and ride and commuter rail here. When we get a chance to lobby for that, as the city, as city staff, we take it. We hope that stays a part of the plan. We believe that that someday will be a valuable service for the community. And if we have a stop, in all likelihood, it would be in this area.
Thank you.
Questions?
Question real quick about the ditch. Dave, is that one of the conditions of, uh, your, uh, planning and zoning and DRC? Does this ditch feed this pro, this property here that's still agricultural, or is it not any issue in abandoning a ditch?
Yeah, I'm probably gonna misspeak if I talk about ditches too much. I thought it was more property to the west. It's a ditch on the south side of the property.
Yeah, well, it goes across the freeway there, so it...
So, it'll need to be piped, it's still in use.
Which I understand is the plan, that that water, still we can make the development to the west. Anyone jump in?
Yeah, I, that, that's usually handled on the final flat, so they can...
Okay. All right. Might just see it as a condition.
So, with final flat, all the active ditches adjacent to the property will have to be piped.
Okay.
Seems really, sorry, I'm, I'm, we're doing the ditch on the north side, or the one on the, on the south.
It doesn't, it doesn't go in that far into detail. It says coordinate with Canal Company to pipe or abandon, abandon the existing ditch.
I understood that was a ditch on the southern boundary of the property along First South.
Okay.
That's my understanding. I could be wrong.
And that will be abandoned.
Okay.
And the water being rerouted, I want to talk to the, the president of the irrigation company. He's provided a letter to the city speaking to that.
Hey, Dave, just a crystal ball question for you. If we, if we take the, the crystal water question, so if we go this route, with a residential, what, and it, I appreciate your comments, sir, 'cause I was actually thinking in the same vein... Again, crystal ball. So, we go residential here for this area. How feasible is it supposedly to put commercial over on the other side? I just, I was driving up, you know, up the freeway in my head, thinking of areas. And I can think, you know, going up towards Sandy and things, where on one side you do have the shopping and the megaplex and the, you know, all those types of things. And then on the other, I can see townhouses and back, you know, backyard windows and things driving up. So, it's been done, but is that an old model that no longer exists? Or is that something that crystal ball would still be feasible?
Yeah, we talked about that, and without a doubt, that kind of development on the west side of I-15 will be feasible, I think, someday. Not in my lifetime, because you'll likely need to have the same population on the west side of the freeway that we today have on the east to be able to support that. So, it would be entirely about just traffic patterns. And that's not going to come until you have a considerable amount of trip generation happening on the west side, so.
Where they would get off and shop before they go home?
Yeah, for example, if UDOT, UTA, and others proceeded forward with their plans, we would ask them to set some land aside for that kind of development on the west side. But I think that'd be done with the understanding that that probably won't be feasible for a really long time.
But this project does not kill commercial possibilities in the area?
Comes pretty close to that, I think. It really does. So, that's, that's the part that we grappled with. But then again, the commercial possibilities or that potential only exists if an interchange gets built and it happens to have a certain alignment. And that's where, where I guess I've talked myself out of the idea of that, of preserving that site as really being the right thing to do.
Thanks.
Great. Anything else? Oh, sure.
I just wanted to correct something. At one point, the church was going to abandon a ditch right here that does, that goes across I-15. They've worked out recently with the irrigation company that that will be piped. And they were going to kind of reroute some water here to make it so they could abandon it. But instead of rerouting the water here, they're going to pipe that. So, likely, they will be required to pipe this. But up until about a week ago, he is correct, that was the plan, but I think that's changed, so.
Great. Any other questions? None, I'd entertain a motion. And do you want us, can you make the same motion to zone change and apply? Okay.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number Z-03-16. An ordinance changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Newport Village Zone Change. And approve the preliminary plat with any and all conditions as foreseen by the planning commission.
Okay, got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passed. So, there you go. All right. Ordinance 05-16, creating a new zone to allow higher densities.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you. We've talked with the council a few times over the past several years about the potential value that might exist for the city. And changing our zoning regulations and what we're proposing tonight, creating a new zoning district to allow for higher density residential developments than what we currently permit. The planning commission, I feel, kind of took the charge almost a year ago to study this issue and to prepare a recommendation for the council on that question, first of all, of whether or not it makes sense to maybe change our rules a little bit. But then also to make a recommendation, if that's something they feel comfortable doing, on exactly how those rules should be changed. And that's what we have tonight. The proposed zoning text amendments, including the creation of what we're referring to as the R4 Zone, is the result of a lot of time and effort that the planning commissions put into this project. We've gone on a number of field trips. They've had extra meetings. We've met with developers. And I really, really appreciate the time and effort. And I really believe the ownership that the planning commissions come to have in this proposal. So, not to put any pressure on the city council here, but the planning commission, I believe, has done a great job. And I think they've come up with a, ultimately, one collective recommendation here that's a good step for the city to take at this point in time. Currently, the highest density that somebody can develop in Spanish Fork is 12 units to the acre. So, to try to give you an idea of what that may look like, you could do townhomes at 12 units to the acre. That is dwelling units that are attached in a side-by-side kind of configuration to where nobody has a unit that's above or below anybody else. You could do that at 12 units to the acre, but it would, it'd look really, really busy. It'd look really dense. More often than not, at 12 units to the acre, you're going to see something like the Diamond Fork Apartments, that kind of a model where it's, in Utah County, for the past few decades, it's been a 12plex, that type of housing product at 12 units to the acre. But you could do with those 12plexes probably close to 20 units to the acre as well. Contemporary apartment complexes, which I'll talk more about here in a minute, which is really what we've aimed at, simply from the idea that today there's a void in our housing inventory in the community. We don't have a quality, well amenitized facility that has clubhouses and pools and recreational facilities with modern living quarters. We don't have a project in the community that's a market rate rental opportunity today. And in my view, for a city of 40,000 people, to not have that option available if residents wanted that, or at times it's needed during the construction of a home, or at some life event that causes you to need to pursue some different housing opportunity, or perhaps it's just by choice. This is just my personal opinion. I think there certainly is a place, again, in a community of our size, for that particular style of housing. So, again, I'll use the phrase contemporary apartment development. And typically, those projects require about 200 units as the minimum size to be able to support the types of amenities that this ordinance requires. So, that being the case, we would expect a project to have, and we've written into the rules here, at least 12 acres, so that you achieve that threshold of units and be able to provide the different things that we believe are important to make these projects successful. We've talked with you about this already. I'll mention it again now. On the north end of Main Street, there's a development that we think frankly serves as a pretty good model for what we'd like to see potentially happen here. The project in Springville, the Outlook Apartments. Very well amenitized, great clubhouse facility. The units themselves, again, very high-quality construction. And let me just make this point with those as kind of the model. This is not coming about from staff or the planning commission because we believe that we need more affordable housing as a community. We have a very, very healthy stock of affordable housing. So, as, maybe we touch on some of the specific requirements that are proposed as part of this new zoning district. Yeah, note again that we're not talking about affordable housing. And again, we've discussed, for example, the rent that's being commanded in some of the types of projects that we've used as a model, including the one in Springville. It certainly doesn't meet some of the criteria that you find for affordable housing. So, that's not what we're looking for. Stress that point just a little bit, because oftentimes, as developers come to my office looking for advice and guidance on where they can find property to develop with 16 units to the acre, for example, they specifically want to develop affordable housing. This ordinance is certainly not intended to accommodate that. And I think that as developers look into this more closely, they will come to understand that we are looking for something different. Going to need my remote here in a second. But just to touch on some of these things, these are guiding criteria that we put together back in June when the planning commission first started to develop what's before you tonight. Wanted to make sure that we wrote standards that would promote these attributes. And I won't read them, but we feel like each one of those points is very, very important. Maybe just the one that I'll stress now that I haven't talked much about yet. Again, in a community of 40,000 people, I believe, and I think the planning commission believes, that there's a place for a modern apartment complex. We're not sure that we believe there's a need today, though, for 10, 200-unit apartment complexes. So, our idea simply is that, you know, we proceed slowly. And likely would recommend that zoning be changed to accommodate a development like this. You know, maybe not more than annually, till we kind of get our feet under us, see how it works, see what the absorption rate is and different things like that. We are not suggesting that we upend our current housing inventory in that makeup of housing that we have in the community with this proposal. Over time, you know, the percentage of our housing stock that exists with apartment units of this type, you know, that may change. But at least initially, you know, we're suggesting that we proceed pretty slowly. And maybe just to emphasize this, with this proposal tonight, we're simply talking about amending the text of the code. We're not talking about any specific location in the city or changing our zoning map anywhere to accommodate the kind of development that we're talking about. So, should the council approve this tonight, a developer still would have to propose a zoning map amendment and go through that process as part of their approval process. And that's a process that provides the city council ultimately with considerable discretion in saying yes or no, so. These are some of the particulars then, though, that we would expect to see with a site. So, not jumping hopefully too far ahead. Similar things that we'd expect to see with, with commercial development, access to collector or arterial roads. So, for example, today, we would not recommend that the zoning be changed to R4 for a site if the only points of access to that site were through other residential neighborhoods. Does that make sense? We wouldn't want to funnel traffic from this type of a project through somebody else's neighborhood. Typically, you see these types of developments next to commercial land uses or maybe a professional office use, in between those uses and single-family homes, serving as kind of a transition between more distinct land uses. And like I said, minimum acreage requirement to make sure that we get a project that's big enough to work. I'll come back to that and just touch right now on aesthetics. A big part of the time that the planning commission has spent on developing these standards had to do with looking at projects and what they felt was and was not appropriate for Spanish Fork. And you'll see quite a bit of language in that R4 text about things that developments must include, different design features that they must include. None of those are there by accident. Everyone's been vetted pretty thoroughly. And with that, just want to mention this, maybe for the last time tonight. But when developers propose projects with the R4 zone, of course, we've written this language to facilitate the kind of development that we're talking about. We'd like to see it happen, but I know from conversations that I've had with developers even this week and specific development plans that they've conceptually put together for sites here in Spanish Fork, that there are standards in this language that they are not going to want to meet. And at least myself and the planning commission, I think, go into this with their eyes wide open and understanding that developers would have to change, you know, maybe their building styles a little bit, or how they would provide access to units, different things like that in order to meet these criteria. And again, the criteria aren't there by accident. We feel like they're collectively critical to making the projects work the way that they think they should, excuse me, the way that we think they should. With that in mind. This is, this is a document that's still kind of in a juvenile stage. It's evolving, but we do want to be very, very clear with developers about the standards that they need to meet. So, we've put that together as something of a guide for them to follow. There are a number of different issues that we want to, I guess, more fully address with a document like that. Winter's not a great time to take pictures, so we'll be out here in the next few months kind of finishing this up. But I just provide that to the council to illustrate, again, the fact that the commissions put considerable time into developing a concept that they think would work well in the community. I also mentioned that even though there are specific standards, there are literally dozens and dozens of ways that developers could satisfy those standards. So, in no way, shape, or form do I feel like we've unduly tied a developer or an architect or other designer's hands relative to what, what style they might choose to follow or anything like that relative to a project that they might propose. But, you know, I think we have taken great steps towards being very clear about the level of quality that we expect somebody to meet in order to get an apartment project approved in Spanish Fork. And we'll continue to do things to make that expectation more and more clear for the development community. So, I think that's about it. Planning commission recommended this be approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has. This will evolve. I'm very confident in that over time. There will be the need to make adjustments here and there, but I think we're pretty close to something that'll work well for the community.
Okay. Since this is a public hearing, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck and Councilman, second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone out there that would like to come and talk about this, you're sure welcome. All three of you. See, none? I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Scopes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any other questions, comments? Editorials?
I'll make a comment. I'll start. I just know recently, I work at Utah Valley Magazine, and we were starting to work on the Parade of Homes magazines and talking to builders throughout the valley and people that we've worked with since '08 when housing was down and now it's coming back up. But things are shifting as we're talking to builders. It's not like it was 20, 50, 100 years ago where someone buys a home and stays in that home forever and pays it off. These millennials are wanting something smaller, maybe not a yard, something super nice like the Planning and Zoning Commission has put together. I appreciate all their time and energy they've put into this because I think this is what a lot of 20-somethings are looking for. They're putting their money into other things rather than a mortgage, which I think is a new concept to me personally. So, I personally appreciate this. So I personally appreciate this and it's very obvious that the staff in Planning and Zoning has put a significant amount of time into this. So I appreciate that, Dave.
Good. Anyone else?
I would like to second the Commission. The time they spent to come down and meet with the council, had an opportunity to visit with them about this. I have spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks driving around the county and even reaching out to a few of my counterparts that I worked. Every community probably from Spanish Fork to Logan has a high density of some sort in their community. And tried to look at some of these projects that they had gone on their field trips. Most of them I were familiar with, especially in Orem because I worked there for a long time. The one that they keep using as an example is a good example of that. However, I believe Orem City, being out of land, has chosen to go to a high density so they can continue to increase their population and meet some of their needs. And some of them developments in Orem right now are new. The ones in Vineyard, of course, that's high density there and those are going up, some of those buildings. The one thing that I got from the Commission that I really liked was the diversity, the different ridge lines, the landscaping and that kind of stuff. I like that. I like to see that in a building. I hate seeing all the same color and the same thing going on. And you talk about the affordable housing. This, yeah, this, and Stacy mentioned affordable housing, or mentioned that the millennials and this is what they're looking for. I tried to make it my goal to find somebody who actually had a high-density housing as I made some phone calls and visited with them, that they told me that it was a good thing that they had done that. And all I got was it was okay or it was a nightmare. And the one thing that kept coming back from everyone that I have talked to at this point, and I still have calls in that I have not been responded to, but every one of them said that it was great when it was built and then they changed management, they changed investors or owners, and then the property went from being a very nice property to being, now it's a liability for the city. And there was a couple articles, past tense, from Provo. Of course, that one is turned into a great nightmare for Provo City. But that was the same thing, change of management, change of owners, change of investors, and it turned for a great project. The one in Springville, I've gone down there. One thing I've tried to do is I've gone to these sites, I've gone in and asked them, tried to get their pricing, what their plans are, their management, the homeowners association, and which they go tend to change or go broke regularly, which changes how they care about the properties and stuff like that. And the thing that I really see is down the road, and I wish we had that crystal ball, Dave, that we can see what's going to happen on Center Street and the highway and see what's going to happen down the street. And I know there is a need as these people don't want properties, they want just a home. And even driving around that Springville one, I just kind of drove around and spent some time down there and seeing like families stand there. And Stacy made the comment that they come in here, they buy, they don't live there for a long time, then they move on either to a home or another condo. And the part that worries me the most is what these turn into after a time. They turn into a liability to the city of something that you can't change. And once we allow, to me, once we allow this, a high density, but the thing that I appreciate is just what you're talking about, all these things that we're going to put these conditions to try to limit this and keep this from not happening. And I've tried, I've actually tried to convince myself because I guess I dearly care about this city and for this to become a huge project and twelve acres is, twelve acres and two-hundred-and-sixteen units on twelve acres of property. And I'm going to quote Mayor Curtis, "It's real easy when you have it spread out over a little bit, the city can absorb some of that, but when it's condensed into a very small area and that concern for the property and care for the property and even the rents, because all it takes is somebody not getting rent to start lowering the rent, it changes very drastically." And that's the part that really concerns me is down the road. And I just, I have tried to do my homework. I so appreciate the Commission, what they've done. They have done over and above. They've gone on those trips and Brad, visiting with Brad, expressed everything that they're doing and continuing doing. They've not stopped doing this. And I feel like every one of them, like you said, have put in their heart and soul into this to try to make this and care about the city. But that's my worry is down the road, what they turn into after they're built and the developer goes away and management changes. And I wouldn't have an effect on that, and I probably won't be here to do that anyway. But I just wanted to voice that. There are some good high-density complexes out there that are awesome, clean, look good, and they exist. It's just they change.
Yeah, and let me acknowledge that as we went and looked at projects and frankly, given what the history of zoning regulations in this valley have been, speaking very generally, to where it's been really difficult in most communities, most settings, to get a high-density apartment project approved, particularly outside of the Provo-Orem metro. Most other projects that you see with any kind of stacked flat, they are condo projects. That's a different animal from what we're talking about here. Because it's been hard to get those projects approved, not a lot of them exist that have some age to them. And it's kind of hard to get a good read on just what that age factor might mean for a lot of developments. We did find a few that have been around clearly for a couple of decades. And to echo what Councilman Argyle said, not all of them have aged well by any means. And that concern, I think, is very, very real. There's no guarantee that the managers that are in place when the project is built are going to be succeeded by managers that will exercise the same level of care and concern about how the property is maintained, about the type of tenants that they lease to, same with ownership, you know, ownership changes over time. And there's very little that we can do as a city to put safeguards in place that compel people to take good care of things over time. That being said, we kind of balance out that thought a little bit. We did find a few projects that have been around for a while that we feel are still being maintained immaculately to where the rent clearly has increased considerably since they were originally constructed. And we really looked to those, you know, along with some of the more modern ones like I've talked about in Springville, as models to follow, simply to give ourselves, we feel, the best shot at attracting the types of owners that are going to continue to protect their investment over time. But again, to Commissioner, I'm sorry, to Councilman Argyle's point, you know, that really is the hard part of this. There's not a guarantee, and that's something I certainly acknowledge.
Well, it's just like, there's no guarantee on any project that's built, a home or apartments or anything else. You know, there's some that are maintained well and others, they're not. And so, I mean, you try to do the best you can. And a property owner, if he invests this kind of money in this type of a project, if he wants to get the rents, the people there, he's going to want his project to look good. And that's how he's going to maintain that. And so, yeah, it's tough. Okay, any other questions?
Just had a quick question. We met with the developer last week in regard, trying to bring him in on a business opportunity that we would like to see come to Spanish Fork. And we mentioned this and it was exciting for him. And he looked at us and said, "Why not twenty-two? Why not twenty? Why eighteen?" So again, we all appreciate what's taken place with the Planning Commission and all the homework and things like that. But when did, how did you get to eighteen, Dave? Can you kind of help us understand how that became the number, eighteen units?
That dartboard up in his office, Brandon.
He had the crystal ball out.
I think it was more than one, Brandon's picture statement.
It was a collective decision, somewhat arbitrarily reached, honestly. Again, the project in Springville, I feel, I'm getting tired of mentioning that, but that's sixteen units to the acre. Some of the projects that we looked at in Vineyard, for example, and one of the older projects in Orem, eighteen and twenty units to the acre. We did not want to recommend that we start on the higher end of the spectrum. So that was kind of a factor in the eighteen number, I think, as well. But we wanted to provide some latitude there so that if somebody did propose a project that we felt met the other criteria, that density number wouldn't be unduly limiting, if that makes sense, provide a little bit of flexibility there for somebody to work with. But honestly, it's all of those things, including what we felt might be palatable for the city council, that kind of led to us reaching that eighteen number.
I appreciate that, and I think you know how I've evolved over the last four years and have watched as, like I mentioned, developments happened over on the north end of town and things of that nature and talking with neighboring communities. I watched my sister get married last year and moved to a neighboring community that had this type of housing for her and she wanted to find something in her community. And it was, kind of made sense, like Stacy says, the millennials to have something for this. So again, I just appreciate all the time and energy on the Planning Commission's behalf. Great. Thank you.
Good. Anything else?
I'd echo that, Mayor, real quick of the planning and zoning and the work that they've put in. That's a lot of time, energy and resources on your department's behalf and the planning and zoning to go around and do that stuff. I look at a lot of stuff like this in more of a binary nature, I guess, with numbers and things like that. So I appreciate Chad talking about the research he's done and the research that I know the rest of the council and mayor have done as well on this change, you know, on a new zone. It's not, you don't go into it lightly and especially going from twelve to eighteen is a step that needs to be, need to be studied and looked at. Springville Development's been talked about and the research I've done there along with some of them in Provo. And I know it's not all about the numbers. We don't make a lot of decisions based on the numbers that may might come to our town. But I want people to know, at least the citizens to know, that that apartment complex that is just to the very north of our boundary in Springville does, right now, and it's new, granted it is new, looks like a great development. And the only drawback I see to that is that the investment, at least the taxable value of nine million, four-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars invested in that development, isn't invested in Spanish Fork, it's invested in Springville. So the taxes that get assessed there are taxes Springville gets. Now, I would bet if you go in there and talk to those young couples or retirees or whoever's buying the unit or leasing the units in there, they're probably doing more business in Spanish Fork than they are in Springville. They probably halfway think they're in Spanish Fork most of the time. But there again, we don't get the nearly ten-million-dollar advantage of those people living in Spanish Fork, but instead Springville does. The rents, really quick, that's been talked about. I appreciate Stacy's perspective on that because she's really cool and gets to talk to a lot of millennials in her job. But, isn't that cool? Isn't that right?
Yeah.
It's cool.
Yep, I'm pretty cool.
You know, the rents, they're getting down, and I understand these can change with economic conditions and everything can change. Heck, we just looked at a, talking about 2035 and 2040 that we're trying to plan into, and I appreciate that we try to do that. But I appreciate us erring on the side of private property rights versus maybe trying to hedge our bets twenty, thirty years down the road, too. The rents they're receiving right now, the latest price sheet down there starts for a one-bedroom, one-bath for nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars a month for that lease. And that's before you pay your garage fee, your pet, if you have a pet, and your utilities down there. Your top one for three bedrooms, two baths is fourteen-hundred dollars a month. The average mortgage payment in Utah is one-thousand-twenty-two a month. So you can see the market of where that is. It might not be as much as people saying, "Oh, here's affordable housing, I can go live at." But it's more of, "I have a small family, I might not be here forever. There's a pool, there's a really cool, you know, fitness facility built in it, clubhouse, you know, and things like that." And I think that's what Stacy's referring to with some millennials there. And it is changing that way. The younger generation now think nothing of changing jobs every couple of years, right? Even careers every three or four years. The mayor's been at this construction gig for ever. Since dinosaurs, so it's.
Caiman.
Yeah. So it is a different, it's a different animal and I think, I think from a city's point of view, I appreciate going into this lightly in the eight months plus of study that, you know, it's been talked about longer than that, but really the hard work and the hard numbers and the digitizing of it that your Planning and Zoning Commission have went through is surely appreciated because it makes stuff more, stuff to us a little bit more clearer and vetted out a little bit. And where it's not, where we're not saying, "Okay, here's the zones where this goes," but here's a, you know, if somebody wants to come and apply for a zone change, we can say as far as the city and Planning and Zoning Commission that, well, it fit, yeah, it might fit there or it might not fit there, right, for a host of different reasons. But to speak to what Brandon talked about, I sure don't want developers to also just simply go north or south of us because this is, correct me if I'm wrong, but this zoning is north and south of us as far as our cities are concerned. And I don't want developers to simply say, "Well, we'll just go south of Spanish Fork and take our ten-million dollars elsewhere and develop there." So I think we have, we're growing up as a city that way. We have a great development out there at the north end of town and, boy, it sure seems like a zone like this is now the timing because it, that's where a retail hub and a, what a transit hub seems to be taking shape in our city. So that's my long answer, Mayor, of the research I've done. But citizens should know that the research has been done both on the planning and zoning and like Chad mentioned, on the council's spot as well. This isn't something we take lightly.
Yeah, and I'd just make a comment that, yeah, we just don't come here tonight and then all of a sudden make a vote. I mean, there's a lot of hours that are spent by everyone here, not only our commission but our council and our staff, and we appreciate that. So, okay. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number zero-five-dash-one-six and creating a new zone to allow higher-density housing.
Second.
Got a motion by a Councilman, Council.
It's okay. It's okay.
I know, I'll catch it. Beck, second by Councilman Scobes, roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Argyle.
Nay.
Okay, passes. All right, let's move into new business. Resolution sixteen-dash-oh-three approving the municipal wastewater planning program self-assessment report 2015.
So we need to do this every year. It's an evaluation of our wastewater system, both collection and treatment in it, just kind of the main things that should pop out at you if you read it in detail. Didn't? If you didn't, then you can just listen to this and you'll be good.
I imagined you talking as I was reading, studying.
You will notice that the CO2 limits were getting close to the limits, and I know that Kira, it looks like he was. And, uh, I know that Kier, it looks like he was really concerned about that. So, uh, don't worry, we have a, in the FY seventeen budget, we have program money to do UV, uh, disinfection, which will eliminate that, so that will be good. And then, uh, also, uh, there was, uh, our headworks exceeded its, uh, BOD and TSS limits, um, for what it's designed for. Uh, that's at the beginning of the treatment plant. Uh, we're still able to treat it all and, and, uh, nothing that left our plant exceeded those limits. But we were able to track down the cause of that. There was a business in town and, and we're working with that business to do some pre-treatment so that, that doesn't happen again. As far as risk to, uh, the, our, our plant, as far as, uh, maybe anything from the state, you know, repercussions from the state, uh, the worst that could probably happen there is, is we'd have to sponsor some training for surrounding plants and, and kinda, uh, talk about how to prevent things like that. So, um, we're, we're addressing that as well. Anyway, we need you to, uh, to, uh, accept this by resolution so that we can send it into the state.
Thanks. Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Resolution sixteen dash zero-three approving municipal wastewater planning program self-assessment report for the year two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, second by Councilmember Beck. And this'll be a roll call vote. Uh, Councilman Argyle.
Aye.
Councilman Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That passed.
Next item is, uh, UDOT is about to, uh, mill down and resurface Main Street. Uh, we're really excited for this project. As part of the project, we will be adding a lane between Ninth and Tenth North. It'll be right-turn lane, which will allow two through lanes that can get onto I-15. We feel like it'll significantly help traffic in that area. And Main Street will be a new road, uh, all the length of it through town. Um, as part of this project, we, we videoed all of our sewer lines and we felt like they were in, uh, seven, five blocks of them were in bad enough shape that we ought to get those replaced, uh, before, uh, Main Street is rebuilt. And so this is a, uh, betterment agreement with UDOT to get that done along with their project. You, digging up Main Street is no simple, uh, task when you have so much traffic on it. And so, uh, this is something you wanna do in conjunction with the UDOT project. And so, this is to do that work. Uh, the, the betterment agreement is for six hundred and eighty-six thousand. Uh, we feel like the total project cost will actually come in around five hundred and eighty thousand, so.
So, so this is from, this is one straight line?
Uh, no.
River line or is it several places?
It's in several places, so, um, you have a little area around Southern North and then, uh, a few blocks south of there is, is, is the other three blocks, so.
Okay. So people can expect, you know, Main Street to be, being resurfaced, milled and then repaved, but also some open holes with barriers around them while you're replacing sewer?
Correct, correct.
How, how fun is this gonna be?
This, this, this will, will likely not be fun until you're driving on it when it's done.
When it's done.
But, uh, uh, we're, we're actually pretty excited for this project. Some good changes. If you've ever driven down Main Street and hit a bump where there was a, a storm box or something and, and it's kinda like a pothole, uh, they, they plan to fix all of those. And, uh, and so some good things are gonna come out of this, especially relieving the traffic congestion that's at Tenth North. So, we're, we're really excited, uh, for that as well. But if you go to our website, uh, to our map page, there's a construction map and you can go to that map and you can click on any project in town. This summer is a very heavy construction project summer. It seems like half
The whole city. Just go ahead and say the whole city.
Pretty much the whole city will be torn up. So, uh, you can click on, uh, whichever project's affecting you and get some updates on it. And, um, we're working hard to keep that updated.
So, maybe as good a time as any, Mayor, just a quick shout out to UDOT and their projects that they have. They've worked hard to, I know notify as a, as a, working on Main Street, they've notified all the business owners on Main Street, at least all the properties, of what's going on on Main Street. And I know the Cut Bridge thing and the Four Hundred North thing, they've tried to get that word out as much as they can with fires 'cause that is gonna be painful for all of our city and the way traffic flows. So I appreciate the city and UDOT trying to do their best because people are still gonna be surprised and be a little frustrated the morning that that happens. But it, it's almost, if they are, it's because they haven't been looking or checking, right?
Right, and I've talked to, um, Terry there at UDOT and, and we've talked about some ways that we can help minimize the impact and they're, they've agreed to do a lot of work at night. So, um, that'll help with a lot of the stuff during the day that we can, it'll be a pain. But next year at this time, we'll all just be grinning.
Yeah, yeah, and hopefully, the, the work is planned to have substantial completion by July sixteenth. So that's kinda the, the date to look forward to and, and
Before Fiesta Day.
Being done at night, well, it's a very busy road during the day.
Yes.
Chris, has this been bid?
Yes.
Are we awarding it then?
It's, it's awarded.
Oh, okay.
This betterment agreement is not, well, it's being awarded right now, but the rest of the project is awarded to the same contractor.
I see.
Chris, how often is Main Street resurfaced?
Back in two thousand and three or four?
Yeah, I would say about every fifteen years.
Okay, makes sense that the sewers needed to be redone now then.
Yeah, I, I, two times ago, we replaced all the water lines in Main Street and that was a, that was a good, uh, project for the city. Uh, that was, that was when I first started.
Mm-huh.
And, uh, I had a lot of, a lot of work on Main Street as a, as a new engineer.
Mostly graveyard, the paving?
Uh, yes, yes. During non-peak hours of traffic.
Okay. So you just need a motion to?
Approve the betterment agreement.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to en- entertain a betterment agreement.
I'll second that.
In, in the agenda, there's a, there is an agreement that needs to be approved.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Argyle, second by Councilman Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving right along.
Okay, next item is, uh, we have become members of Utah Lake Commission. Uh, that they sent out an email to all the cities saying that they are, uh, is a lot of grant funds available to the cities. We applied for some of those funds in conjunction with Utah County and was awarded a, a grant for, uh, ten thousand dollars, uh, to do a forty thousand dollar study of connecting our trails, uh, that we have along the river to Utah Lake. Uh, they are working on a trail system that will circumscribe Utah Lake and this will connect into that. This is just a study to, to choose what the best alignment for that trail would be. Anyway, the total cost to the city would be fifteen thousand dollars. The county has agreed to pay fifteen thousand and then the Utah Lake Commission would pay ten thousand. This is to approve, uh, that, uh, grant contract.
Okay.
Motion to approve the Spanish Fork River, River Parkway Trail Alignment Study.
Second. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mitchell subdivision.
Okay, we have, uh, we've talked a lot about the water breaks that we have in the Mitchell subdivision. We've had a, a lot of them. And, uh, we are excited to be able to have enough money to replace those water lines in, uh, the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, which begins in July. Rather than waiting until the summer of two thousand seventeen to do it, we, we feel like it would be well to start now. Uh, we bid out the project and, uh, the bids, because we bid it out early, came in about a hundred thousand dollars lower than engineers' estimates. We're excited about those bids. Uh, the construction would start, uh, towards end of May, June. Um, but all of the costs, we get our first invoice, would be in July in the next fiscal year budget. So, we need the city council to approve this, this, uh, bid because the money has not been appropriated yet for, uh, fiscal year two thousand seventeen. So in approving this, you'd be obligating yourselves to approve this item in the next year's budget.
That's a nice way to sneak it in.
That's right.
Oh, you, you should, Chris is good at this.
Yeah, does Chief Adams know about this?
So, so this will be a big issue for you newer city council members. Um, we have the worst fiscal year budget schedule of all time. I can't believe we start July first in the middle of a construction season. It's very hard to program projects so that you can build them when it makes sense to build them and let, yeah, keep them in one budget year. You, you really never can. And so, so these things come up quite often where you, you don't want the tail to wag the dog. You wanna build it during the construction season and it always will, always will cross two budget years, so.
It's giving you a hard time?
It was, snuck in.
Yeah, it was. Entertain a motion for the Mitchell subdivision water line replacement project.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the Mitchell, that's what I was trying to get, approve the Mitchell subdivision water line replacement project.
Second.
Got a ma- uh, motion by Councilman Argyle, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approval? All right, approval settlement. We already did that? Okay, that's been done. Uh, proposed purchase property of sale.
A few months ago, we discussed with the council, the, uh, responses received from RFP to sell about an acre and a half that we have on the north side of Volunteer Drive next to the Wendy's gas station and convenience store. Um, it's taken a while to get the agreement that's before you tonight put together. Um, I believe it's consistent with what we discussed that night with the purchaser. Uh, two of the key provisions there are that the applicant has a certain amount of time to start construction. I believe it's a year to obtain a building permit and another year to commence construction on the facility or the property reverts back to the city, um, such as if the, the transaction hadn't taken place. But then also, we've committed to not build a competing facility for a period of five years. Again, we, we understand that's consistent with what we discussed a few months ago and that's, uh, that's how the agreement reads.
When do we receive payment?
At closing.
At closing.
I assume, I, I believe the purchaser is pretty anxious to start, so I would guess that that would start within the next ninety days or would happen within the next ninety days, maybe faster.
No event later than May sixth, two thousand sixteen, is what it says in the
On the closing.
Thanks, Dave. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we entered into purchase agreement for the sale of city property located approximately two hundred West Volunteer Drive.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, second by Councilman Argyle. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gordon?
I move we go into closed session.
For?
And transaction.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That was Councilman Gordon and second by Councilman Mendenhall.